Good afternoon, everyone. Councilmember Dustin Hill is Chair of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. Thank you for joining us this afternoon here for our last committee meeting of 2022. I've been joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Boone, our Vice Chair, Councilmember Amos, to my far right, to my immediate left, Councilmember Mary Norwood, followed by Councilmember Keisha Waits, and we do constitute a quorum. I will make a motion to approve the agenda, and we had to have one walk in paper that's been seconded by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. It is adopted. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Amos. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. Those items are approved. We'll now move on to public comment. First up is Ken Roebling.
I haven't heard this before, so I'm gonna make an idea here. Why not sell the jail to Fulton County? That'll save two problems: their overcrowding problem and the $16 million that Atlanta is spending on a handful of prisoners or detainees. They're not really prisoners. If you needed more space after you sold the jail, you can rent space from Fulton County because they should have enough by now, once they get a hold of our jail. Then you can form a committee of nine people. The committee could consist of three council members, three members of the administration, and three members of the public. This committee would figure out what kind of facility do we need to solve the problems that the people have been coming in and saying, "We have to repurpose the jail." This would work out for everybody. And if you set the goal for January of 2026, you can have a deadline which will give you a goal. You know, something else I was gonna say, but I can't think of it right now. I should've wrote it down. Anyway, it's a good idea to solve Fulton County's problem because the way we're going at it now, they're gonna have to spend a lot of money, taxpayer funds, maybe have to raise taxes to build a new jail, when we have one that we're not utilizing, and they can sell a bond for that and pay it off over time and not have to use the whole money to build something at a taxpayer expense that is too high. Anyway, it was an idea. Thank you.
Bruce Griggs.
Thank you, first of all, for having me here. I want to thank Councilman Norwood for inviting me. There's a state of emergency going on in Atlanta. Just this past Saturday, me and hundreds of individuals gathered at Jackson Parkway and Bankhead Highway to do a Stop the Violence rally in response to the epidemic of violence, especially in response to the young men getting killed at Atlantic Station. Before we could finish that, in Buckhead, a 77-year-old grandmother was killed senselessly in her garage by, suspectedly, another young black male. I talked to Ms. Norwood early this morning because it bothered me real bad because I was once an only child who had a mother who worried about their mama. And to come home and find your grandmother, your mother, dead in the garage, we are at a state of emergency, Atlanta. I am here representing a program called the Saving Our Sons Campaign. A local DJ by the name of DJ Greg Street and myself started this program over 15 years ago in the born-home housing projects. I am a former law enforcement officer, juvenile probation officer. I've worked for APS as an in-school suspension person. I worked at the Atlanta City Jail as an detention officer with Chief Labott. I am an expert at youth violence prevention. Saving Our Sons is a violence prevention program that takes the perspective of treating violence as a public health issue. When we treat violence as a disease, we create an opportunity for recovery, for rehabilitation, for intervention, and prevention. The programs that we've been doing here in Atlanta are not working. We gotta stop thinking that we play basketball, that's gonna stop some violence. We got to stop thinking that if we play checkers or chess, that's gonna stop some violence. That ain't gonna get it. We've got to have specialized programs. In this program, what we do, we show kids that they're not bad, that they're not wrong, but instead, they are infected. It helps when we do that to give the kids an opportunity to change themselves. They stop resisting. What happened in Atlantic Station is happening in Buckhead. Long time ago, you would've never, you would've expected it to happen on Bankhead, but you wouldn't expect this kind of behavior to go on in Buckhead. This lady has lost her life, and this young man's picture's been posted off all over media. And just like the other incident, we're trying to find out who it is. There's a code. Most of the people in this building that are sitting here behind the chairs, you all grew up living by the commandments of the Bible, I'm sure. You know them: Thou shall not kill; thou should not steal; thou should honor thy mother and father. Well, these young people that I'm working with on a continuous basis that are carrying these guns, they don't live by those commandments. They live by the commandments of violence. Thou shall not snitch; thou shall carry a gun; thou shall be down for my homeboy whether he right or wrong. I'm gonna leave you with this. Snitching is when you tell to get yourself out of trouble you deserve to be in. Telling is to help. I'm a citizen. You deserve, you have the right to help. You have the right to be safe. Every citizen here in Atlanta needs to be safe. We've started a campaign where we're trying to get a million signatures to turn over to the city of Atlanta, to turn over to Senator Warnock, and also the-
Mr. Greg, sir, one minute over.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for your time. There's a state of emergency. No matter how many minutes I be over, you all need to address this problem that's going on in Atlanta immediately. Thank you for your time, sir. You all have a great, blessed day.
Prophet Curtis Harrison.
Well said by Mr. Briggs. Well, well said by an ex-police officer. Well, you know, like, again, like I said, homelessness in Atlanta, Georgia, Fulton County, it seems like a broken record. I'm up here every week, every, every three days, every, just talking about homelessness. When 19 folk died in Atlanta froze to death in your streets. Okay, and then we have police officers not letting folk out of jail because of their homeless. You've got police officers arresting black men and women for panhandling. And then we have, well, I've been paying attention to, well, Rashad Brooks got killed by a Atlanta police officer at Wendy's, so we're not gonna let y'all forget that. And then there was another police officer that killed a black man at his home in DeKalb County. I'm not gonna let y'all forget that. Now, their family got awarded a million dollars. That wasn't enough. The Brooks family got awarded a million dollars. That's not enough. From, now, let me talk about, say something, since y'all here, the chief of police of Cobb County stuck his hand down the shirt of Judge Hatchett in public. At a, Chief, you didn't think I knew all that, did you? At a, at a convention where Mr. Brown, I'm a Brown, was there with his guest, just the chief of police. Now, if you don't think we have a problem in police force, we do. Now, if a man can stick his hand down, if a white man can stick his hand down the shirt of a well-known judge, what is every day coming woman facing out here on these streets? Now, you got homeless men and women and children. You got homeless women telling me that they wanna kill themselves because they're homeless. This city's been awarding money. I know it's been award, HUD is giving away money, government's giving away, I'm Governor Kemp, I'm getting ready to come to his office on this issue of homelessness in Atlanta and Georgia Fulton County. Now, the fact that the matter, we got people dying on our streets due to homelessness, freezing to death, it's an issue. Now, the violence has been out of control, but like I said before, when the jails are full, that brings money to the city. When the jails are full, that brings money to the city. But we got people climbing over people in their jail cells. That's unsanitary and that's against the law. So you can't break law and hold up the law and say we good people. See, it's been known, it's been said, that Atlanta is full of corrupt politics. It's been known, as it's been said, and it's been documented that Atlanta has corrupt politics. Do you know how strong that word corrupt politics, do you know how strong that word is? Corrupt. Do you understand what that word means? Corrupt. Corrupt politics. No justice, no peace.
It's Honore Jordan, and we have been joined by our colleague, Councilman Robert Street. Welcome.
Give naught to the spirit of God, everyone that's here. For rulers are not a terror to good works, but to the evil. Will thou then not be afraid of the power? Do that which is good, and thou should have praise of the same. Romans 13, Chapter 3, verse. The minister regards to thee for good, for the purpose of human government is uphold the good and punish the evil. The government hath given James Christ the right to come in my house and see it for me. For James to fight to be my husband, having paid Jesus' price, is to ask for death. The word of God, don't condone fornication. Know ye not that the unrighteous shall not inherit the kingdom of God? Be not deceived, neither fornicators, nor adulatists, nor adulterous, nor infaminate, or abuse of themselves with mankind. 1 Corinthians 6, Chapter 9, verse. The unrighteous shall not inherit the kingdom of God. There were evidently some in the Corinthian assembly who had professed Christianity as a system of doctrine, but not as a rule of life. You need Jesus, he don't need you. Thus saith the Lord, curse be the man that trusteth in man and make his flesh his arm, and whose heart departed from the Lord. Jeremiah 17, Chapter 5, verse. The rebellious children are the people of Judah who are determined to go down to Egypt, that is, seek an alliance with Egypt against Assyria. Flesh will fail you, but God is more trustworthy. The Lord will enter into judgment with the ancients of his people and the prince thereof; for ye have eaten up the vineyard, the spar of the poor, in your houses. Isaiah 3, Chapter 14, verse. Their guilty faces clearly reveal their sinful hearts. Do you desire to be treated like the poor? It's not possible, it's not impossible, because Christ hate evil. Jesus gave us a choice. I heard a minister preaching about American debt can cause bondage for us if it's not paid. We in danger. And Christ let you know about the danger you in, because it's what we owe Jesus. I owe him my life. He is my life. He is your life, you living on his time. He gave it to you to do Christ's will, not your own will, not your own mind. Thank you. Obey Jesus, be Christlike men and women.
Chris Brown. Anton Farmer Jr. Well, you're up next, but they have to be present to donate their time, Mr. Robinson. Okay, so you have six minutes, Mr. Robinson.
Good afternoon, Chair. I would like to get a moment of silence. The 77-year-old lady named was Eleanor Bowles, Bowles Family. Forgive me if you're watching. I'd like to give a moment of silence for this, for this young lady. A couple of things happened within the last two weeks in the city of Atlanta with the shooting at Atlantic Station, and we came, the mother and I came to full counsel and asked that there be a curfew going to action, in my understanding that many of you not in, in agreeance with curfew. So when I was coming up in born homes in the mid-'80s, in the '90s, we had a unit called the Red Dog Unit. It was very successful. As a young black man that grew up in the projects, I was pleased with that unit, and we need to employ that unit back with the game for us. We need to have an aggressive unit out here with these youths, because I seen some things this weekend that disturbed me. I'm a young black man who stand beside everybody in the city of Atlanta, but I seen some things in the eyes of these young black men the last two weeks, and it's not fear. They don't have no compassion when it come to life. Every life matter, but when you have a young black man that is willing to take a life of a 77-year-old white woman, hey, man, that's dangerous. Usually back on black crime, which we shouldn't accept that either, but when you have the balls and the audacity to go in Buckhead and kill a 77-year-old white woman, hey, man, that's scary. And Malcolm X once said, "What's good for the black community is good for the white community." We have to understand that we need the help from the community. APD and the detective have the best and the brightest, but they can't do their job and solve these crimes if it wasn't for the help of the community. We have always had the help of the community. In the last administrations, we've gotten beside ourselves. We think that our friends can do it. Most people that have friends in politics don't have friends to give a darn about the community. They in the business for profit to make money, and I'm okay with that. I'm not judging that. But you have to arm the people that care for the community and have a heartbeat in the community, because, listen, I sat with these 12- and 15-year-olds. Zion Inferno was this Saturday. Cameron Inferno was last Monday. These kids sat at the church at First Iconia after the service and smoked blunt after blunt after blunt. Had respect, but had no fear, have no idea what's really going on. They don't even have the consequence of life. I'm telling you, it's scary out here, and it's real, and that curfew is going to help. And we have to have an aggressive unit. Public safety? What do y'all, what do y'all identify as public safety, though? What do you identify as that? Can you please draft that up, Mr. Hillis, and give that to the public so we can see what you call public safety? Because what we call public safety, those of us who are losing our lives out here, it's a dire need, man, it's a 911 need. Andrea Boone, if your father was alive, he would be out here today marching with me. Because it's what we stand for, what's real. Not in here, like, I can't believe y'all don't understand what's really going on out here and give a darn enough to really pass meaningful legislation to stop this today. This young white lady lose her life for us to really act and really get serious about it. But if it take that, okay, so be it, I'm all for that. But this is dangerous, man. So when, so when a guy said there's a code, yeah, women, baby, kids, off limits. But usually, black men have a fear of killing white women, because you know you gonna get as much time the law allow when you do that. And if you not scared of that, man, that's just dangerous. Women not safe no more to pump gas to go in the grocery store. Oh, come on, y'all, the holidays is right around the corner, get dark at 6 o'clock. You think these young men that got bigger guns than them need to be out on the streets 8, 9, or 10 o'clock when it's pitch black dog? Come on, man. A curfew for 7 o'clock for kids out here who are noncompassionate about life need to be in the house or locked up at 7:00, and I'm saying that as a young black man that grew up here. We need to employ the game unit to use the same tactics on Dustin Hillis as the Red Dog. No, you wasn't here when we had the Red Dog, but I'm sure you've heard of it. Byron Amos, Ms. Boone, Ms. Overstreet, Ms. Waits, Mary Norwood, you guys were here when we had the Red Dog. It was very effective. We need to do something about this. There's four black councilmembers up here, five with Mr. Byrne. We have no excuse why we can't get this passed. When you're not scared to go in the middle of Buckhead and kill a white woman, that's scary, man. My life have no value. You not scared to kill a 77-year-old white woman, you damn sure ain't scared to kill a 45-year-old black man. Come on, man. How much of this gotta go for y'all to sit up here and not do this? I say this all the time, and it's not a black and white thing, but we can't say we the black Mecca, black Hollywood, because we all know, y'all folk know that it's a tale of two cities. Atlanta's not the black Mecca, not the black Hollywood, and we number one in America for income inequality. And the violence, the World Cup ain't gonna wanna come here, Mr. Hillis and Mr. Amos, to your district, when you killing white women, black women, black kids, white kids, gay, straight? Come on, man. We messing up the international money? We messing up everything when we allow this to go? And the reason why I say this is because you guys are the majority on council, and we gotta stop this. If the administration don't wanna stop it, it's in y'all hands. Come on, man, we gotta do this. Like, we gotta do this immediately, man. Not because this happened to Ms. Eleanor Bowles, but because we don't want this to happen to another Mr., Ms. Eleanor Bowles, or another Ms. Catherine Johnson, or whomever. Like, we gotta stop this right away, y'all. We cannot keep allowing the same old thing to happen. Please employ these things, the curfew. We need to get this Red Dog Unit back on the game, task forward with these young black boys. We gotta stop this immediately, y'all. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. We'll move on to presentations. Major Smith stepped out. We will move on to the public defender and then come back to APD's report. Mr. Dase, you are up, sir.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I am Ken Dase. I am the Director and Chief Public Defender for the City of Atlanta Office of the Public Defender. I'd like to share some of the highlights of activities that we've engaged in and some of our programming over the last several months. This first slide indicates some of our data points from July and August. Highlights outreach efforts of our social work team and our client advocates, most notably that, as you see highlighted in the yellow, that we had 322 engagements over that two month period of time. 52 of those engagements were referrals to our holistic employment program. Two of those were referrals to our benefits program. On the far right, the graph shows some of the overlapping services that were provided to some of those 322 clients served, which could include referrals for housing, substance abuse treatment, and some medical assistance amongst other things. In July and August, we had two success stories that we'd like to highlight, we think are pretty notable. One being a success for our SSI Outreach Access and Recovery. We have, two of our social workers actually certified in SOAR, the certification process to have someone, to assist someone in getting their benefits restored. But on this particular case, we had a client who, back in March of 2020, had a stroke and subsequently, between hospital stays and in their recovery process, this individual lost his job and was, in fact, evicted. But of course, with the assistance, as a referral from Gateway, I need to mention that Gateway Center actually referred this individual to us, but with the assistance of our social work and client advocate team, this individual was restored- of our social work and client advocate team, this individual was restored his benefits. He's now receiving back pay. Our team also was able to secure temporary housing for him and progress report as of current is he is doing very well. A second success story, or unification story that we'd like to share, where we had a client that was arrested for disorderly conduct charge. This particular client had a numerous amount of collateral issues that included an imminent homeless issue. Our attorneys were able to resolve his legal issue, and with the assistance from Hope Atlanta, we were able to stabilize the client, get a ticket purchased for him to travel back to his home in Maryland. He is now reunited with his family and doing quite well. For September and August, I'm sorry, September and October, same metrics, 304 clients that we were able to service. Of those, 13 were referred to a holistic employment program. And want to pay kind of close attention to the far-right bar graphs. The one in purple, we talked about this at a previous public safety presentation, our community resource sheet. This shows the number of those community resource sheets that are updated weekly, that go out to some 100, 200 different emails. So you get real-time updated in all the services that are available within the city. But that, again, has been highly successful for our office. Also during this period of time, we've got two stories from September and October that we'd like to highlight. One is, we had a client who was unemployed, single father of two small children, who had a traffic offense. He was identified in our intake process as a good candidate for our holistic employment program. We worked with him, and he was hired full-time and is still working full-time and is now doing quite well. And actually, our latest update with him about a week ago was that he's on track to be promoted. Second story, we had a client who was a homeless mom with a 13-year-old son. They were both living in their car and received a traffic citation. And of course, you know, that compounded the issues that they were already experiencing. However, our social worker and client advocate team were able to find them temporary housing at a hotel. Ultimately, were able to secure a housing voucher for a two-bedroom apartment, and they are, in fact, doing quite well right now. In fact, our client advocate and social work team went and visited with them. They wanted to say thank you in person. So those are two of those stories. This past September, the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge held its annual network meeting in the city of Atlanta. Myself and our Deputy Director, Don Dale Patterson, along with a representative from the New Orleans Public Defender's Office and the Public Defender Office in Philadelphia, presented a seminar titled Strategies for Public Defenders to Engage with Their Communities, Build Trust, and Develop Holistic Services. The seminar was well-attended. It was very successful. We've received a lot of follow-up around some of the strategies that we recommended. A lot of the work, as you all well know, outside of the courtroom for us, has been nationally recognized for our innovation and our access to the community. It was nice to present this time in Atlanta at home. As you also may know, we are a previous, our office is a previous MacArthur grant recipient. So this was a nice way to bring home to an organization that's been very supportive of us. Our most recent project, I guess I should go back, for our office, approximately 10 years ago, the Public Defender pretty much started our outreach program at Thomasville Heights Elementary School. And we have continued our community commitment through various programs and legal clinics in the Thomas Heights area. As this council is well aware, the city has had some recent involvement since Thomasville Community with the Forest Cove Apartments, that has been somewhat of a troubled location, but received a significant amount of assistance from both the mail administration and you all as council members. Our office, led by one of our very capable client advocates, Ms. Colleen Higgins, developed this latest project in November, this past November, to refurbish the basketball and tennis courts that actually sit in the shadow of the Forest Cove Apartments. We spent a few weeks out there getting some community buy-in as far as what they would like to see in the community and worked with our partners with Art in the Paint, SCAD, the Department of Parks and Recreation, the city's Department of Cultural Affairs, and Councilmember Winston's office. And you'll see here, for two and a half weeks last month, in both good and bad weather, we spent about 10 hours a day using volunteers from our office and from SCAD and transformed the basketball and tennis courts over at the Thomasville Heights community. This represents a before picture. And this is the project after our work. We're expecting a ribbon cutting to occur very soon, and the residents have already begun using the facilities. And so it looks as though that's gonna be another success. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dase. Colleagues, any questions? The public defender. Mr. Ramus.
No questions, really. Just a word of thank you to you and your team. You do appear to do a lot more than just defend. You actually serve and help and actually make the day brighter and better. So continue doing what you're doing. Just thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Overstreet.
Actually, more of the same. We had the same idea. I literally, as we wind this year down, I wanted to let you know that we know that you are always, your department's always having to figure out how to make the best of the not enough resources and too many caseloads and different spaces that could, you know, be a little more ideal. And you do. You always do. And even when I circle back, you still don't complain. You are still just working with what you have and making this wonderful lemonade, you know, taking care of the city like we're supposed to. And I just want to say thank you for that. And, you know, get ready for more of the same, starting in, you know, three more weeks at the top of the year, because we'll have a whole nother bag full, I'm sure, of things that we have to tackle as a city. But thank you very much for all that you do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dase.
Thank you.
Go back to Atlanta Police Department's biweekly report. It's usually given by Deputy Chief Peake. He has other obligations today, so we have Chief of Staff, Major Jason Smith.
Thank you, sir. Yes, the executive team had range qualification this afternoon, so. Thank you for having me. So to close out Week 48, you're gonna see our crime is at about, up 2% overall, and actually, in the last week, it's actually down to 1% overall up for the year. So we're gonna close out the year strong. We're at, you see, we're at minus 4% in aggravated assaults year-to-date, and we're at plus 1% for the 28-day period in property crime. That, where there's been an increase in motor vehicle thefts. You guys have heard about the Kia Boys. We've talked about it here before, and we've briefed you on that before. So as we make those inroads, try to make those Kia arrests, we'll hopefully bring that down. A couple of highlights I wanted to point out, too, in our 28-day trends. Aggravated assault at minus 16% for the 28-day, and we have robbery, which is, of course, our second-most driver of homicides, down 38% for the 28-day period. I want to point to a case from Nancy Creek Road that happened on December the 5th, where there was a burglar and a residence called. The gentleman was actually in the garage. The time from call to dispatch was 1 minute 11 seconds, and then the time the officers got there was a little over four minutes. And apprehended the suspect who had turned into, the residence called for burglary. He ended up fighting both the residents that were elderly at the time. We arrived, he was apprehended, multiple felonies. Right now, he's in jail with no bond. A little bit of his history, 18 cycles out of Alabama, two cycles out of Florida, currently on federal probation. His probation officer was contacted, and he is in Fulton County with no bond. It was a great job by our 911 dispatchers, great job by officers, and we were happy to get him apprehended. Luckily, the homeowners did not suffer very serious injuries. Breakdown of our homicide motives year-to-date. As you see, we're still those escalating disputes, right? Two people that know each other, acquaintances, start arguing, and it just escalates into usually gunfire. As you see, robbery, number two, we've talked about that. And then you have narcotics, domestic revenge. Those are the big ones we're fighting, but we're really fighting those escalating disputes as we've talked about numerous times throughout the year. And we're gonna continue to battle that, I'm thinking, in 2023. I'd like to talk about Brandon Stitchcomb real quick. He was a homicide suspect, and he was in Zone 1. He was known, we had an officer that was watching Connected Atlanta from their desk. There was cameras along the MLK Corridor. This Officer Brown noticed the subject, Brandon Stitchcomb, knew he was wanted for homicide. He was known to carry a weapon. He's known to fight police. He was known to flee from police. She got on the radio, coordinated multiple units, gangs, Zone 1 crime suppression, the fugitive unit. Fulton County Scorpion Unit also responded, continuing our great partnership with them. There was a quick briefing. She, the officer, continued to watch the suspect on the cameras. The suspect went inside of an establishment. The location was called out. A perimeter was set up, and the subject was taken into custody without incident. It was a fantastic job by everybody involved, and we especially thank Fulton County Scorpion Unit, and we took another homicide suspect off the street. It was a great job by our units. Operation Fall Frontier. So there's been three operational periods have been completed for a total of 34 arrests. Four gang charges have been issued. 15 guns have been recovered. This was a continuation of Operation Heat Wave, targeting our location-based offenders, where there's, you know, locations with a high proclivity or a high chance of gun violence to take place, and also targeting individuals that are known gang members and strongholds of known gang areas. There was actually, since this slide was created, there was actually another operational period where another five guns were recovered, another 10 people were arrested. There's gonna be a final operational period in the coming weeks, and we'll tell you the results of Fall Frontier. This, of course, is a collaboration between the gang unit, the Zone CSU units, Fulton County sheriffs, the state attorney general's office, Fulton County DA's office, the ATF. A lot of folks are involved in this, a lot of internal resources and external resources targeting these violent areas and these violent gang members. Firearms year-to-date, as you can see, we're up 14% year-to-date. All the zones have been doing a great job and really targeting those areas where firearms are most prevalent, and you can see that in the recoveries year-to-date throughout all the zones. Repeat offenders for Week 48, there was 13 arrests. The average age of the arrestee was 40 years old. The average number of arrests was 26 arrests per person. The average number of felony convictions was five. These 13 individuals account for 332 combined arrests, 63 combined felony convictions and just 13 people. One individual arrested 47 times. One individual convicted 11 felony charges. Three documented were gang members, and two were arrested while in possession of a firearm. December 8th, we had our annual Guns and Hoses event at the Tabernacle. This, of course, is our fundraiser for PAL and the great efforts that they do or they put forward, boxing matches between the police and fire department. I believe we ended at a 5-5, and then somehow, FIRE was deemed the winner, but we'll address that next year. But it was a great success. It was a good time, and I highly recommend, if anybody has not been to Guns and Hoses, to make it a point to do it next year. It's always for a great cause, and it's a good time. Connected Atlanta, we continue to see success with camera integration and registration. Right now, we're over at 10,000 cameras, and we are going to be in Buckhead. Our cops team is gonna be making a push around the area where the tragedy happened and gonna be visiting businesses and residences and trying to get those integration and camera systems, get those numbers up, especially in that area. That's all I have for the APD biweekly update. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Major Smith. Colleagues, if you have questions or comments, please indicate. Speaker button. First up, Councilmember Norwood.
Yes, I know we've got the new group that gets together on the repeat offenders. This is so alarming. The city has gotten more and more violent. It's gotten more and more outrageous, and y'all are doing such a good job to do everything that you're doing. But I think this committee, and I'm gonna serve on it again next year, needs to know, what do we need to change with the juvenile point system? What do we need to change? What do we need to change with the bail system, with cash bail? What do we need to change? And we need from y'all, what are the judges doing? The juvenile judges and the municipal court judges? And so, what, why are we having what we are having in this town? This is not Atlanta, and it's not just the horrific crime of Saturday. It is the culmination of all of this. And again, that's not y'all's fault, but we have got a broken judicial system. And it's unbelievable. This is not Atlanta. And if it is somebody's Atlanta, they need to go somewhere else. They need to create that kind of city somewhere else, because that's not the kind of city we want to have here. We want a city where everybody has fun, but people are not fearful. And right now, people are terrified because of everything, because of Atlantic Station, because of everything that's gone on all over the city. And the violence is outrageous. So please give us, when we come back first of the year, that's my request to the committee chair and to the police department. I want some action items, whatever we need to do at the state legislature, if we need to be over there to change some state laws, let's do that. This is, this just cannot continue, and I'm quite sure the administration doesn't want it to continue. So let us know. Let's all reconnoitre first meeting of the year. That's my request, Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Next is Councilmember Boone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to get information regarding the staffing issues at the Atlanta Airport. How many officers do we have presently out there?
I would have to look at our staffing. I can't give you an exact number. I'm not sure on that. I can certainly get that for you.
And also, I wanted to know, do you have a plan to kind of rebuild the staffing, rebuild the rankings at the airport?
Yes, I know Major Collier is out at the airport. He has had a number of suggestions to improve the staffing out there, and we're looking at a number of options currently, including a security program where there's retirees that go back.
Will you ask him to give me a call? I'd like to really, really talk with him about what's going on at the airport as far as staffing goes.
Okay.
Ask him to give me a call. I'd like to meet with him next week. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Overstreet.
Thank you for your presentation. I, too, was stuck on this page. I found myself not able to move from this page, the one with the recidivism. You know, it, this, the repeat offenders, it, just watching all of these stats here together on this page really reeks of where the problems lie. It just, uh, watching all of these stats here together on this page really reeks of where the problems lie. We have not addressed the fact that we're not keeping people in jail when they deserve to be there. And we're not making them better while they're there so that when they come out, that they don't go back. I don't know what it's going to take for us to get this page better. But I do think that this is a great place to start because we've got to figure out how to make our streets safer. I agree, this is not Atlanta. I grew up here and I am fearful. I'm fearful. I'm fearful for myself as a mother and a working mother that's out in the community all the time because I want to be. I want to be right next to my constituents as we clean up, as we are changing our green spaces, as we are deciding where to put stop signs and tactical sidewalks. I want to be in the streets with my community. I want my children to experience what I experienced in Atlanta. Prioritizing recreation in our recreation centers, um, being able to go to the grocery store for their mother. I did that for my mom. I used to walk there. I wouldn't dare ask my children to walk to the store for me right now. And I'm afraid of that. So I can't separate myself from the fact that I'm fearful too. I can't separate myself from the city in the fact that this is not who we want to be. So I am here to help. I am. If you think that is something that council can do for you to help you erect any kind of new, um, initiatives like the Red Dog or anything that actually worked in the past, if council can help you in any way, I'm here for it. I want to help because I don't want to be fearful anymore. I don't want 13 and 14 year old children with guns that should be in school to feel comfortable in the streets with their guns. And I, I just think that we're just way off track right now and I don't want to be. I want our stats to change. I want to make sure that we're helping those that have gone off the rails. Because 13 and 14 year olds, we know they should be in school. And when they're not in school, they should be in programs. We need to be helping those parents. And I know that this is bigger than just APD. I get that and trust me, I do know that. I just know that we are, we are way off of the mark right now. And these stats say that to me. I like the stats on some of the other pages, but I got stuck on this one when we're talking about one individual being arrested 47 times. That individual, it's just a matter of time before we meet him in a parking lot with groceries in our hand. So I just want to, I just want us to figure out a way to change this page. Because when we change that page, I think we're going to be in the right direction.
I, I absolutely agree with you, ma'am. And, and, and as a resident of the city myself, I, I couldn't agree more. Seeing 13 and 14 year olds comfortable with guns, it's, it's not where we need to be. And, and I'm with you, as I put together those stats, those always, repeat offenders always jump out at me. And that is absolutely, I think, a place that, that we can start and make some inroads with. You know, unfortunately, again, APD is one part of the criminal justice system. Uh, so we need all systems kind of coordinating and working together with us in order to facilitate that. And, and I know that, that's absolutely our goal and that's always our goal, especially, uh, coming into 2023.
Okay. Um, well, thank you. I just wanted to share some of my feelings because I am fearful. I'm fearful. And I just hate saying that. Um, as a citizen of a place where I grew up, where I raised my family, I don't want to feel fearful during ordinary life events. I just don't. So.
Absolutely. No, no, I, I agree. We, we don't want people feeling that way.
Councilmember Norwood.
Yeah, I just want to bring up because I've been down here a long time. When we have an issue with the homeless, someone will trot out the lovely mom with two kids who just lost her job. And if she could just, and so it's the one-off. When we talk about repeat offenders, people bring up the, well, he got in trouble or she two or three times and, and they really deserve another chance. No, start out with 47 times. That person is number one on the list. Whoever's been picked up 42 times, that's the second person on the list. Let's get a list published. Let's know who we're going after and let's get them off the streets. And don't go into this, if it's three times, now you're a repeat offender. And so we do draconian things for every single person that comes down the pipe. No, start at, this is my request to the judicial system, to the administration and to everybody. Quantify it and go after the worst and let's get it public and let's start taking this back. So I don't want to hear the precious one who just had a problem. I want to know who are the bad guys out there wreaking havoc and causing this city to become something that it never was intended to be. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other colleagues with questions, comments? Major Smith, um, I will stick with the theme, um, and ask some questions about the repeat offender, repeat offender slide. So is this only accounting for?
That is one week.
Adults or?
That is just adults, yes, sir.
And it doesn't go under the three charges as a juvenile?
No, those, so those don't include any, any charges as a juvenile, anybody who was charged as a juvenile.
And you know, just to your point on one of these slides, this is not just a Atlanta or even a Georgia problem. I mean, the Nancy Creek suspect was at 20 arrest cycles in two neighboring states.
Two neighboring states plus he was on federal probation. So there's federal charges in there too.
Would like to take a deeper dive into repeat offenders next, uh, next year and get some more information on that and how we can change things, especially with the state legislative session coming up.
Absolutely.
Did have a few other items that were just on our agenda that we had previously asked for. If you could just jot those down and we can get updates.
Yes.
Uh, first of the year. We'd ask for each council member to receive an update on the amount of cameras in their district and like a down report of how many that are down. And, um, we had asked for an update both from APD and the auditor's office about, uh, LRB and the license and permits unit as to what items have changed since that audit was completed and to make sure all those recommended items have been taken care of. That is all for now. Colleagues, any final questions, comments? Thank you, Major Smith.
Yes, sir. Thank you, everybody.
Next up, we have the Department of Corrections Quarterly Update, Chief Dancy.
All right, thank you, Chair and other distinguished council members. Um, I am interim chief Elder Dancy, Department of Corrections. I will be presenting our first quarterly report, which covers the month of June, July and September. I always like to start with, uh, two important statements, um, for our organization and team members. That's going to be our vision and mission statement. Our vision statement is to protect the public while striving for excellence through exemplary customer service and promoting community involvement. And our mission statement is to provide a safe and secure correctional environment, enhance public safety through partnerships with the community and law enforcement, which is a good segue into some of our partnerships, uh, that we, um, have, uh, experienced during this last quarter. Uh, the first one was with the Emory Mental Health, uh, Service with Grady and Emory Psychiatric Unit Department. Uh, this is a relationship, ongoing, uh, contract that we have with Emory. They have two of their, every two weeks, I'm sorry, every two weeks, their, um, Emory fellows come out to, uh, the jail and meet with, uh, detainees with the mental health challenges. And this is really a good opportunity, uh, for them to connect with those detainees. It's all voluntary, but they get to connect with those detainees, intern them into their system and, uh, establish ongoing aftercare where they're able to provide medication and additional appointments. Viral Solution, as you know, Viral Solution was very instrumental during COVID, not just here in Georgia and Atlanta, but nationwide. And we continue that relationship with them. They have a representative to come out at least, uh, once a week to provide free COVID testing and vaccinations for our staff members and detainees. And inmate, inmate work detail, um, the inmate work detail, as you know, um, was suspended during COVID. But over the last year, we have, uh, rekindled that relationship and it has gotten stronger. We have inmates from DOC coming to our facility at least three times a week. Um, and, uh, they are usually, they are connected with the Clayton County and Atlanta Transitional Center as well as the Metro Women's Facility. And of course, we also continue our relationship with Director Tally, with Clean and Cut Initiative utilizing some of those DOC, um, workers as well as Commissioner Wiggins, Department of Public Works. And then, of course, Fulton County, we have an ongoing training opportunity that we've established with them, with their emergency management and fire safety team, um, to, uh, ensure that we continue our mutual aid support. So with the next slide, uh, this is something that we are very proud of. We had to go through our re-accreditation and recertification process. Re-accreditation with the American Correctional Association. Um, our team was able to, uh, receive the 100% in those mandatory, um, standards and 100% in non-mandatory standards. So, um, we, uh, this included a complete review of all of our policies and procedures and practices. Also a full inspection of our facility, a physical inspection by the, the audit team, as you can see pictured in the top there. Um, as well as interviews. They did random interviews with detainees, with staff members and also did a night visit. So, um, and, and after that audit, that was a three-day audit in June. And then in August, we had to go to New Orleans and sit before the panel hearing, uh, to defend our standards. And, uh, again, I just want to congratulate the team, um, led by Captain Wiggins, who's actually here in the audience and her staff and the entire DOC staff, uh, participated and worked together, uh, to ensure that we received our re-accreditation. This is, uh, our third, uh, I believe our fourth, uh, re-accreditation audit. And then the Pre-Prison Rape Elimination Act, um, certification also was due in June. And, uh, we were successful with that two-day audit as, as well. And that, uh, team was led by our head nurse, Nurse Wright, as well as other DOC members. So definitely want to just thank our team and, um, and, and show that the public that, uh, we were able to, uh, not only meet the mandates as the, um, audit team at the hearing told us is very rare for teams to receive 100% in both mandatory and non-mandatory. So with the next slide, this is one of our key initiatives that we, um, initiated. This was basically like a vulnerability assessment that we had done. Um, as you know, um, ACDC, uh, sits right in the heart of downtown, near a major, um, um, street, Peachtree Street. So we wanted to take a look at, to see if there were any major security concerns. So we asked JIMA, our Georgia Emergency Management, their Homeland Security, uh, Division to come out and to do a vulnerability assessment. And, um, I'm pleased to report, according to their assessment, uh, the overall protective measures index for ACDC was at a seven, 74.4, which was higher than the average of 41.6. And that's a comparison of the high of 62.8. So we surpassed that compared to 117 other facilities. And the overall resilience measures index for ACDC was 57.4, uh, which was above the average of 41.6. So, um, I was pleased to see where we, where we are, um, with that assessment, but this is something that will be ongoing. And we, uh, actually have in, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Active Shooter, um, set up with APD in the near future as we continue to make sure that our facility is, uh, safe and secure. And then the bottom portion on the screen, you see the online portal. Um, this is something that we are very proud of. This will give, um, our customers and your constituents and, um, and visitors of Atlanta another opportunity to post bond for someone that's incarcerated at ACDC. Currently, of course, we have the cash bond opportunity, uh, but this will allow someone to remotely post bond electronically, um, either through their laptop, desktop or, or, or phone using the online portal, um, with assistance, uh, assistance of, um, N Court. And, uh, this is a vendor that Municipal Court has a relationship with. And, uh, we were able to join, um, with, um, N Court to create this process. It's, uh, has, the, the contract hasn't been executed yet, uh, but we expect that to happen this month. And we, hopefully we'll be able to go live, um, sometime early next month. So, um, and I just want to thank, um, Judge Portis and his team for allowing us to join, um, uh, with, uh, N Court as well as, um, other, um, departments who assist the DOP, um, Department of Law, AIM, and as well as my team. Major Johnson took the lead on this, uh, with assistance of, uh, Ms. Kewana Williams. So we really appreciate this. Uh, we will work with our PIO to push this out once it's ready to go live. Um, also I didn't mention that this, they would also have, citizens would have an opportunity to use a remote kiosk, um, that, uh, this vendor has a relationship with, um, so that, um, they will have that option as well. So our onboard and, um, and attrition numbers, um, like most departments, this has been very challenging for us. Um, as you can see, um, with Swan, we onboarded 22, uh, but we lost 24 during, um, then this is going to be calendar year, um, January to October. And, uh, we, uh, for civilians, we onboarded 10 and lost, uh, 12. So this is again, an ongoing challenge. Um, we know that, uh, the recapture program, uh, has assisted as well as the 520. Uh, so we will continue that. And, uh, of course, the pay increases for our employees has, has also, um, is also, uh, something that, uh, would be helpful. Um, the snake slide are stats that we normally cover, um, at our, for our quarterly report. These are going to be, um, our numbers for total booking and average daily population. For average daily population as a comparison for FY21 was 568. Daily population was 30. And these numbers were, as you can see, the, the uptick, they were impacted by COVID during that timeframe. And then FY22, 776 and 45 average daily population. And, uh, this fiscal year, uh, 1,074 and our average population is, uh, 51. And then the breakdown for the total booking, as you can see for this quarter, July is 1,069, August 1,053 and September, um, 1,100. And then the average daily population for July 51, August 52 and September 54, again, an average of 51. And these are going to be our court numbers. As you know, we still have a virtual court that's ongoing. Um, this is, uh, working, uh, for both us and Municipal Court. Uh, so we've continued this process and the numbers there are going, as you can see for FY21, it's 694. FY22, um, 1,181 and FY23, 1336. And, um, uh, in court, in custody count, which include next day cases and reset, is going to be for July of this quarter, 494. August 555 and September 387. And as you know, uh, we are moving forward with the Fulton County agreement. And, um, just wanted to, um, here just wanted to, to high, underline some of the, the high level responsibilities for each agency. Uh, Fulton mainly will be responsible for security. That's 100% for custody and control of their detainees. Also medical, health, medical and healthcare, food services and programs. And ACD, um, main responsibilities will be housing space, of course, space for food services and laundry, general maintenance and housing, uh, chemicals and, uh, utilities. And this is a look at, uh, uh, the housing space available. We have 20, a total of 22 housing pods. 11, as you can see, will be made. We have 20, a total of 22 housing pods, 11, as you can see, will be made available for Fulton County. The first wave of the female detainees that will be coming in, we have already four northeast, as you can see, which is a special restrictive housing unit. And then the general population, five northwest, five northeast, five southeast, and six northwest. That would be made available right away for Fulton, and then they'll have the overflow at six southwest if needed. Total space available, it says up to 700. We have a total of 704 beds available for Fulton. And this was shortly after council took a visit, made a visit with Fulton County. This was on the heels of that tour. We did a tour with council, and thanks for all of you that came over. And I know some of you have already done a tour of ACDC. But not only did we tour, that we did a tour of the housing unit, as you can see in the pictures, they also toured the medical unit, the intake-receiving area, and the diversion center layout. And this is a tour we did this year with other facilities. I think one of the ways that we could learn is to connect with our partners in this business and look at how they operate and also connect with their leadership team and network. So we went over to Fulton County a couple of times, but we also went to Henry County, as you can see in the picture there. Sheriff Scandrick's team hosted us there, and we had a meeting and lunch with them, as well as did a full tour. And then the Metro Center, Transition Center on Constitution, the state prison, we took a visit there. And then just last week, we went to DeKalb County and met with Sheriff Maddox and her team. And her team actually took us on a full tour of their 1,000, 1 million square foot facility there on Memorial Drive. So good opportunity to learn and look at best practices and connect with other DOC leaders. And as you can see, this will be ongoing. We have one scheduled coming up with Gwinnett County. And so as we look beyond the walls, we continue our relationship while we counsel this past quarter with Councilman Bond with HelloFresh. And you can see the dates there, we assisted with those events, as well as Councilmember Boone in District 10. And you can see the dates there in partnership with Fulton County, I'm sorry, with Atlanta Fire Rescue and the Solicitor's Office. And again, beyond the walls, this is an opportunity that we went out to National Night Out to join with our APD partners to support them, as you can see in the picture there, as well as Atlanta Fire and community members. And this is Faith in Blue. This is initiative that APD is, has connected with the community leaders, as well as faith-based organizations to work in the communities and to try to just build bridges. And so our chaplain, Chaplain Battle, connected with APD to show support for this initiative. And this was a visit by the Israeli Police Department. This was coordinated by APD and Georgia State Gilly Program. So we had an opportunity to meet with the Israeli leadership team and give them a full tour of ACDC. And this was a training retreat that we went on. We did a visit with our staff and our interns to the National Center for Civil and Human Rights. This was a great experience for our team, gave them an opportunity to take a look at things through a different lens, especially if you're in the jail business, it's good to take a look at, you know, different cultures and look at history and see some of the struggles. So we had lunch, and then we went over to visit this center. And I thought it was a very positive experience. The interns were, of course, a part of the mayor's intern team. And we had three interns that worked at ACDC, not in the security area, but in administrative portion. But these interns, I think a couple had criminal justice, was criminal justice major, and one was a psychology. So gave them an opportunity to kind of look at the DOC process as it compares to the criminal justice system. And that's it. That's the end of my report. Of course, we entertain any questions, but I do just want to say again, thanks, Council, Chairman, and Public Safety Committee for your support.
Thank you, and I'm Chief Dancy. Questions from colleagues? Councilmember Boone?
Yes, thank you, Chief. Just wanting to thank you and your entire team for what you all do out in the community, providing those critical resources. Thank you all so much. I see them all of the time, as well as yourself, especially helping those seniors and the homeless community. You all have been very sensitive and just being involved and caring and using your resources out here to provide an additional layer of public safety. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I've been joined by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, and he has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief Dancy, for all that you do, and the way that you and your leadership team have responded to the crisis and corrections over the past few years. And thank you for being outside in the community. And one, just personally, again, thank you for extending your staff to help us every Wednesday with HelloFreshes. As your staff can attest, and those with Atlanta Fire Rescue, Atlanta Watershed, and with the Solicitor's Office can tell you the need is ever-growing. You know, it seems that just when I think that the crowds will abate, they don't. There are even more people coming every Wednesday. So we appreciate you extending your staff to assist us in that manner. But I have a question, though. I know I had spoken, and this goes back to bail reform. I know that I had spoken with the Chief Judge during the summer, and he said that you all were working on something to kind of make the bail release program more effective. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. We've had several meetings with Municipal Courts, specifically Judge Portis. I think we met recently, maybe about three weeks ago. So there are two components from our perspective that we're looking at. Of course, the judge is looking at pre-trial, rekindling the pre-trial release program. I think he's already onboarded some employees and then looking, moving towards the final phase of training. We've designated space and intake location for that team to occupy, so they'll be in direct contact with our booking team. And then what we also did was we connected with our vendor, BI2 Technologies, to set up in our jail management system a way to flag those individuals. Now, this is not a complete fix, but those who are arrested, as you know, when there's a, as we call them, a general arrest, like for disorderly conduct and so forth, that court date is usually set, I believe, three days out. And then traffic offenses is about three weeks out. And so if you are arrested, again, prior to your court date, then that system will flag that individual, let the booking clerk know that they will not qualify for a signature bond. So we've started that recently, hadn't seen a big uptick, but we know we will likely get some of those repeat offenders in that process. So that's one part of that. And then with working with Municipal Court, connecting with them on the pre-trial release, I think would be huge as well. And I think that will probably be moving forward in the very near future.
Have you all discussed any potential legislative changes? Because the law that was passed in '18 basically eliminated all of the support and follow-up mechanisms for signature bond release. So have you all gotten to the point where you've discussed anything like that?
Not in particular, not legislative changes. I know the judge is looking at doing an order, because there were some changes with the state statute. And so I think at some point, and I don't want to speak for him, but that's something that he's looking at. But as far as any legislative changes that this body would be assisting with, not at this point.
All right, well, in anticipation of the holidays, do you expect, I guess it's really a combination question with APD, typically arrests go up during the holidays or can go up around special events? Have you all seen, well, what I'm really trying to get to is with the increase in COVID and people gathering, have you all seen an increase in people maybe bearing some of those infections? Or how are you handling that?
Not at ACDC. We haven't seen an uptick at this point. But you're right, during this time, there are a lot of events. I think Peach Drop is coming up. You have a couple of football games coming up. So we always ramp up for those and expect an increase. But just watching the numbers as of late, they have been pretty consistent with our average population at about 50. I think over the weekend, when I saw the number, the highs we got was 50, exactly 50, and our average is 51. But obviously, we closely monitor that, COVID, monkeypox, and so forth, but we haven't seen an uptick at this point. No, sir.
All right, well, thank you, Chief Dan. That was your office chair.
Bond, colleagues, any other questions or comments for, and I'm Chief Dancy. Thank you, Chief Dancy.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Before we move on, just acknowledge we've been joined by our colleague and future Public Safety Committee member, Councilmember Lewis. We will move on to Department of Law's quarterly update. I understand they have a two-part presentation, one will be Watershed Division, but Ms. Hickson.
Good afternoon, committee members, Councilmember Hillis, members of staff, Atlanta citizens. I am pleased to be able to provide the report for the first quarter of the year as relates to the activities of the Law Department. If we will move, and I will, keeping time in mind, not go through the entire report. However, we've provided it electronically, and should any member of the public wish to have a copy, just reach out to the Law Department, and we'll be happy to send that to you. We think it's important for you to be aware of the activities of the department. If we can move to Slides four and five, where we talk about various accomplishments of our staff members. This one features Attorney Tyronea Smith, who, as Chair of the, well, she was Chair of the Georgia Association of Women Lawyers, what you need.
May Sheer has it.
I don't coordinate real well, so somebody else has to do that for me. In any event, Ms. Bailey, who's our Director of Finance, and I should, need to give her a lot of credit, she keeps it straight, and I'm just so grateful for all the work that she does on behalf of the department. So thank you, Ms. Bailey. Tyronea Smith, as Chair of the Georgia Association of Women Lawyers Special Events Committee, hosted a judicial luncheon, and we talk about the speakers. Tyronea is getting ready to leave us. She will be going to the airport, and so they managed to steal her away. I tell people I'm not a selfish boss, that I like to see people produce, but she's been just an extraordinary lawyer on behalf of the city, and will do, continue to do good work on behalf of the city with the airport. We can move to Slide five. I want to highlight Attorney Jonathan Farrell, who was a guest lecturer at Georgia State University College of Law, where he talked about the city's impact fee program, Attorney Martin Clark, who's an alumnus of Leadership Georgia, and then Attorney Robert Moses, who you will hear from later. He was appointed as an adjunct professor to teach the introduction to U.S. Law and the Master of Laws program at Georgia State. And we're glad to have him as a part of our staff, but you will hear more from him later on. While I have a moment, I would like to acknowledge some other special people in the department. The following individuals were recognized for five years of service to the city, Shafalika Boizel, Stacy Miller, I was also, but it feels more like 35 years, but, no. I'm grateful for my five years of service with the city as the city attorney. We've had, for 10 years of service, Crystal Grissom, May Sheer Bailey, who you met earlier, Tanya Callaway Jackson. For 20 years of service, although she is not officially a member of the team, we consider her a part of the family, and that's Kristin Didius, who's our Chief Transparency Officer, has given 20 years to the City of Atlanta. And for 25 years of service, we have Kimberly Patrick, who's here, she's our chief deputy city attorney, if you'd raise your hand, and Sandra Stevens. And so I think it's important that you know that we have people who have committed a quarter of a century to the City of Atlanta and continue to do so. I want to make sure they were recognized at this time. I'd also like to acknowledge the following persons who received recognition for their outstanding service, Laverne Long Daniels, who came to us to take over our interpleter quiet title in TRO cases. And most attorneys don't like doing this, but she came in very enthusiastically. And just so you know, the city ends up recovering over $1 million annually in these particular fees, so we are so proud of her service. I'd also like to acknowledge Stephanie Grant, Kit Jane, Lauren Clayton, and Sandra Stevens, who are the team that worked on the solid waste rate matters, the ordinance implementation of the board. And it was, as you know, a heavy lift, but they worked very hard on that. I'd also like to acknowledge Stacy Miller, who's in our litigation division, who has just done a yeoman's job. She's one of our more experienced attorneys, even though she's very young and only been here five years, but she has taken on a number of our Section 1983 cases where we're representing or defending against allegations of police misconduct. She's done an excellent job. And finally, we have the group from the Aviation Department, Vivica Brown, Tyronea Smith, Jessie Dagan, Sharice Gates, Tracy Hackett, and Grant Wilson, all of whom worked around the clock over the last two weeks on the issues related to the concessions RFP that went out on the street. They were literally working around the clock, and I thought it important to mention the good work that they've done. If we can move to Slide number seven, litigation matters. Just in general, over the first quarter, we had 971 open matters, with 811 being handled in-house, 160 being referred to outside counsel. Slide eight, we've had, the litigation department has made 51 appearances, had two trials, 20 depositions, five civil service board hearings, eight mediation or settlement conferences during the first quarter. Slide nine, we talk about three significant litigation victories. The Banks case, which was a case where there were allegations regarding sexual harassment of employees in the Department of the Aviation Department. We were successful in getting that case dismissed. The Dover case, which is a 1983 case regarding where there were allegations of police conduct, we were able to get that dismissed. And then the Joyner case, which was a reverse discrimination case, where we were successful in that particular matter. We can move to Slide number, let's start Slide number 17, where we talk about the metrics for the contracts portion of the Business Services Division. You will see that we, they've handled over the quarter 862 matters, two involved 121 contract reviews, 31 solicitation reviews, 26 legislative packages, among many other activities. Slide 18, we talk about client requests to that particular division, 466 from the Procurement Department, 211 from the AIM, 95 from DEEM, 70 from grants and community development, and 20 from the executive office. Pages 19 through 22, we talk about the real estate, land use, parks and rec division. The metrics are found on page 22. For that particular division, covered 232 meetings, 83, I'm sorry, 33 legislative requests, five requests for easements and encroachments, 21 leases and licenses, eight legal opinions. We move to Slides 23 through 26. This is municipal governance. We move to Slides 23 through 26, this is municipal governance. Page 23, I just want to highlight that we worked on the MOU to bring in two fellows, one in sustainability and one for the Executive Office through Fuse Corps. We've also done work on the MOU where the Urban League was given a $1 million grant through ARPA Fund to help the community deal with learning loss. Slide 24 deals with CDBG grant agreements, one for playground equipment, the second for Americans with Disabilities Act improvements to the parks. Pages 25 through 26 deal with the Finance Division and the transactions they've worked on, to include $950 million in commercial paper for the Department of Aviation, the transaction related to 59 new cars for the Police Department, and three fire trucks. Moving to operations, which are found in Slides 27 through 43. If we can move to Slide 30, the graphics, we've had a matter of 50 matters closed in the first quarter, you can see the various subject matters, they were all labor and employment related. Then Slide 31, I wanted to include this, just for your information, at the point that the city began to have more of a presence in City Hall for folks to not continue on remote working, we've had an increase in the number of requests for accommodations through the Americans with Disabilities Act, so this gives you an idea of the level of activity that's been involved with that, and that that particular division of the Law Department has worked with the Department of Human Resources to manage. Slides 32 through 35 will deal with watershed, but we're going to move on because they have a special presentation that they're going to make. Slides 36 through 43, the Transportation, Public Works, and Save Department, again, want to recognize their work on the solid waste rate change ordinance. Their graphics are found on Pages 40, their metrics on 42 and 43, where they talk about the amount of legislative review that is done during the first quarter, as well as Slide 43, the number of matters that have been handled by that particular division, 160 matters. Slides 44 through 48 talk about the Department of Aviation and the various items in which they have been involved. With the metrics found on Slide 48, where this particular division has had to handle over the quarter 436 matters, and you see how those break down. Slides 49 through 50, we talk about the revenue recovery, as I mentioned before, we have an attorney assigned to deal with quiet title and interpleter actions, and so for the first quarter, we were able to recover some $553,000 in revenue. Pages 51 through 54, we talk about our claims numbers. The first quarter, we had 609 claims, we received an additional 148 new claims, we resolved 320 claims during that first quarter. The next slide gives you the specifics of the monetary amounts involved. You can see the comparison where there was a demand which was up, exceeded 28 million, we were able to resolve those in the amount of little over 4.9 million. The same with the, with the claims, with the 1.4 million of requests and claims, we were able to resolve those for $176 million, $176,000, excuse me. At this time, what I'd like to do is ask the Department of Watershed attorneys to come up, so that you can meet them, and they can provide their report on the work that they've done on behalf of the city over the quarter.
I am Roger Bandaria with the City of Atlanta Law Department. I head up the watershed team within the Law Department, and I've been asked today to come chat with you a little bit about what we do. The watershed team is a advising council team. We provide legal services not only to the Department of Watershed Management, but general environmental advice across the city's departments. Excellent. So who are we? We have three members on the team, myself. I have been with the Law Department actually since 2000, and proudly representing watershed since 2006, and I've gotten to know many of you over that time period, I'm grateful for that. Also on the team is Robert Moses, Robert's been with the team for about four years now. Prior to that, he had significant, significant, excuse me, experience in the areas of land use, real estate, zoning, and environmental matters. And rounding out the team is Spencer Peck. Spencer has been with the team for about a year and a half now, but prior to that, he had significant experience as an environmental planner, in particular in the stormwater area, which is very relevant to watershed. And in point of fact, we were able to hire Spencer away from the Department of Watershed Management. So with that, first, I'm going to turn the floor over to Spencer Peck, and Spencer is going to come up and talk to you a little bit about what we do for watershed, and give you some examples, and then Robert Moses is going to come up and do the same for environmental and sustainability matters. So Spencer.
Good afternoon, Chair Hillis, members of the committee, my name is Spencer Peck, I'm the newest member of the watershed team. I'd like to thank you for your time today, and talk you through what our team does, and thank Ms. Hickson for this opportunity as well. So you can see on this slide a lengthy list of all the major categories of work that our team does for, to support watershed management. A major component is ensuring that the department complies with the federal and state laws and permits, as well as the consent decrees. We also assist watershed in implementing the Atlanta City Code, especially Chapters 154 and Chapter 74, for matters regarding stormwater management, floodplain management, and erosion and soil, erosion and sediment control. And we support both the Riparian Buffer Technical Panel and the Water and Sewer Appeals Board in their efforts and their work. As I'll discuss in more detail in the next slide, our team helped the department develop its float initiative for unpaid bills, or for accounts with unpaid bills, and we helped the department develop internal standard operating procedures, training for its staff, as well as guidance documents. We collaborate with DWM and the Department of Law's land use and real estate attorneys to gain access to private property for construction projects, as well as managing watershed management property, especially from matters impacted by the bond covenants. And finally, our team collaborates with our colleagues in the litigation division and outside counsel to defend against litigation, and that includes matters of very common water and sewer backups and stormwater flooding, as well as complex litigation like contract disputes and rate changes, rate challenges, excuse me. So I'll now talk about two programs that provide a brief glimpse of the depth and breadth of our work supporting watershed. So as many of you know, DWM is operating its Flexible Levels, Options, and Affordable Terms Initiative, or the Float Initiative, for accounts with outstanding balances. The groundwork for this initiative was established by code amendments our team helped draft, and that City of Council approved in 2021. The Commissioner's authority was expanded and the program extended in subsequent legislation passed this past fall. The program runs until January 1st of 2023, and offers customers without sending bills access to staff for service requests, also offers account adjustments and credits and one-time no-interest payment plans. Next slide, please. So our team provided advice and counsel on the legal authority to create this initiative, the day-to-day operations, including detailed standard operating procedures, advice on the collectibility of aged debt on outstanding accounts. We drafted the legislation to expand the power and also set the groundwork for this program, and we've helped develop the communications that have been shared with counsel and the public regarding this program. Next slide, please. The second program I'd like, or project I'd like to talk about is the North Fork Storage Tank and Pump Station. This is a capacity relief project designed to divert flows from the combined sewer to a 15-million-gallon storage tank, and then slowly release that volume back to the system so it can be treated. It's being constructed near the intersection of Sidney Marcus Boulevard and Beaufort Highway right along Peachtree Creek, there's a map on the middle of the slide there you can look at. This facility will increase system capacity, improve odor control, and significantly reduce the number and volume of sewer overflows to meet the requirements of the first amended consent decree. It also provides improvements to the adjacent Cheshire Farm Trail, to provide occasional maintenance access and improve the trails with permeable surfaces and creek overlook areas. Our team of attorneys provided counsel on project planning, site access, obtaining WFI, federal WFI funding for the project, preparing and finalizing project solicitation documentation, and drafting legislation for the budget amendments and the project awards. And with that, I'll pass the presentation to my colleague, Robert Moses. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members. As Roger stated earlier, the watershed team not only provides advice to our friends in the watershed department, but we also provide environmental advice generally to the city as a whole. Some examples of this is we provide advice to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Aviation, and we provide advice and counsel to the newly established Office of Sustainability and Resilience. Next slide, please. Just a couple of examples of the types of matters that we do outside the Department of Watershed Management. Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, of course, the world's busiest airport, has a very complex stormwater infrastructure system in place. This year, the state of Georgia renewed its industrial stormwater permit, and we assisted the Department of Aviation to comply with that permit in preparing things like its stormwater management plan. We also assisted the airport in planning with its airport tenants, because each tenant that's a user at the airport also has to prepare their own stormwater management plan in compliance with that state permit which emanates from the Federal Clean Water Act. Next slide, please. Another example of our work is with the Office of Sustainability and Resilience. Just last week, the council approved a carbon credit program for the city. This is the first carbon credit program in the Southeast, and only the third that we know of in the country. What this program will do will enable the city to create carbon credits from the Lake Charlotte Nature Preserve. Those carbon credits can then be sold on the open market as a means for generating revenue for the city. That revenue can then be used to put back into city funds for sustainability efforts, and also for the maintenance and upkeep of Lake Charlotte Nature Preserve itself. Next slide, please. And finally, we've been doing work on the Chattahoochee Brick Site, we've advised watershed management, enterprise asset management, and the Department of Parks and Recreation on environmental site issues. This includes compliance with cleanup requirements from the state. We assisted with the closing process when we closed on the transaction, and we also provide ongoing remediation and contamination advice to Parks and Recreation and Watershed, so that the site, when it is open to the public, can be used for its contemplated end uses. Next slide. And with that, we can answer any questions.
Thank you, everyone at the Department of Law who presented. Colleagues, questions, comments for the Law Department? Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for the Watershed Division. Can you explain the credit program out there at the lake? What would be the incentive for someone to purchase a credit?
Yes.
What do they get for it?
So there's two types of credit programs, there's what's called the compliance market, which is like in the state of California where it's mandated by state law, and then there is the voluntary market. So in Georgia, we aim to sell our credits to the voluntary market, and the market would be companies, other cities, or even ourselves, to purchase the credits or retire the credits to enable us or them to meet their environmental goals. So things like if they want to receive, you know, zero net emissions and things like that, they can use those credits to retire and then obtain, and achieve their sustainability goals. And the way that works is, is that we have, the contract that the council approved last week is with a carbon registry, and what that registry does is it undertakes an investigation of Lake Charlotte Nature Preserve and determines how much it is in terms of worth in the creation of those carbon credits. The registry then creates the credits, they're then able, we are then able to sell those credits on the open market once they've been created.
Okay, well, I guess I'll talk to you more about it offline, but that much of an explanation was helpful. Thank you.
Other colleagues with questions, comments for the Law Department?
I do have one request, Ms. Hickson, on the claims.
Yeah.
Can we just get a detailed report about the claims that are over a year old, that are still left unsettled?
Sure, we're glad to do that. I think we've, where's Sharon? I think we've done a pretty good job of clearing up that backlog, but we're happy to provide that information. I also wanted to mention, I've got outside counsel here for one of the items that's on your agenda, so you'll let me know if we need to go into executive.
Take that for the end, and we'll go into an executive session.
If you need an executive session, we're, we have somebody present to answer those questions.
Thanks so much. All right, that concludes our presentations. We will now move on to our resolutions and claims, speaking of with favorable and unfavorable recommendations. I will make a motion to accept all favorable claims, items one through seven, through second.
Right.
Second, my Vice Chair, Councilmember Amos, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays, those items are favorable. I will make a motion to adverse all unfavorable claims, items eight through 20. Second, my Councilmember Boone, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
Seven yays, zero nays, those 13 items are adverse. To the regular agenda ordinances for second read, 2201887, item number one.
An ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos to amend Chapter 106, Article 3, to add an unlawful loitering section which specifically prevents minors under 16 years of age from loitering in the area as defined herein as the tourist triangle or the restricted monetary solicitation zone and further purposes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir, in a never-ending effort to find better ways to protect the citizens of Atlanta, this is a paper that's really looking at what we can do around loitering, or the effects of loitering, really. So looking at some of our most well-documented areas such as Atlantic Station and ML King Jr. Drive, this is an attempt to put some things together to give our law enforcement personnel another tool that they can use to actually engage those that may be or are about to be engaged in criminal activity.
Right. We have, or at least I have received some opinions from the Law Department. I know we can't discuss those in open session, but Ms. Robinson, do you have anything in general to offer that we can discuss in open session?
Yes, good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. In addition to any of the opinion as discussed in the written opinion provided to the Chair and the author of this paper, which as you stated, would be privileged and not able to be discussed in open session, I would like to note that in order to address the issues possibly that are set forth and are needed to be addressed in this ordinance, the state of Georgia... of Georgia currently has an law on the books which criminalizes loitering or prowling at OCGA 161136. Prosecution under this ordinance would be a misdemeanor and does provide that, excuse me, a person would commit the offense of loitering or prowling when he is in a place at a time or in a manner not usual for law-abiding individuals under the circumstances that warrant a justifiable and reasonable alarm or immediate concern for the safety of persons or property in the vicinity. The statute sets forth the circumstances which may be considered in determining whether or not alarm is warranted and provides guidance concerning law enforcement enforcement of this particular statute. This statute has been, the constitutionality of this statute has been upheld by the Georgia Supreme Court, and therefore, this misdemeanor, which is, of course, a more severe crime than anything that could be passed in the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, is able to be utilized by Atlanta Police Department or any post-certified law enforcement within, that's able to operate within the City of Atlanta in order to address the serious issues that are attempted to be addressed in the paper before this committee at this time. So, I did want to make sure that this committee did know that there are available avenues to address this issue, but if there is any need for further discussion concerning this particular ordinance from law, we'd be happy to do so in executive session.
Okay. Moving on to our next speaker, Councilmember Rover Street.
Thank you. This is for our law department also. What is to stop all of us or any of us from identifying other areas other than this tourist triangle? Because loitering has really begun to be a huge problem, inviting criminal activities. And again, especially where we're talking about 16 and under, these are those 13, 14 year olds that should be in school that are loitering outside of this tourist triangle. Like, what is to stop us from identifying other areas to add to this paper? Because I'm a yes for this paper, and I'm a yes for other areas also.
So, again, the Department of Law's serious concerns with this particular paper and the constitutionality thereof. The tourist triangle is identified in order to address the crime of monetary solicitation rather than loitering. And so, the identification of the locations within the tourist triangle were specifically identified as related to panhandling or monetary solicitation. They don't relate to loitering. And so, as I stated, the state law that currently is on the books and can be enforced concerning prowling and loitering is enforceable throughout the City of Atlanta regardless of any location. There is no locational restriction in regards to that state law and where it can be enforced.
Got it. Because the panhandling is an issue. Loitering's an issue. Everyone wants to feel comfortable. So, it is your legal recommendation is for us to do what with this paper?
The Department of Law would ask that this paper not move forward due to the legal concerns as outlined in the memorandum provided to the chair and the author, which the law department would be happy to discuss further in executive session.
So, Councilmember Amos, what are your thoughts on that?
Councilmember Amos.
Thank you. After being told repeatedly that we do not have a loitering law in the City of Atlanta and that loitering, the act of standing around, is protected by the Constitution, as the same email we got earlier with this statute, I knew of the statute in the state of Georgia, it was creative way to do something to, that would give our officers a tool to engage those that are just standing around. So, that's how we tied it to the tourist triangle. But using this information, if, I mean, I am willing to hold this paper, hold this paper, until we can find a way, working with the law department and those powers that be, to figure out how we can make our street safer, how we can move the packs of people just standing around every day on the corner doing nothing. Because if you look at ML King, four people shot, three people dead, just by people standing around, that lead to other things. So, we can hold this paper, work with the law department, and time certain, hold it for a cycle, bring it back out, because we need to do something and give our officers the tool. And I don't think this law that the state of Georgia actually have on book is strong enough to take care of the issue that we're suffering from in the City of Atlanta.
Amos, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
You'd like to make?
Yes, motion to hold.
I will second that motion. And I believe, Councilmember Lewis, did you have a question or comment?
And I would say it's too close to, it scares me a little bit. I remember DC 6 laws growing up where me myself, standing on the corner of Cleveland Avenue on Brown Mill, was stopped by police as a 12-year-old because I was just standing there dribbling my basketball on the corner, having a conversation with somebody. And it scares me because I'm thinking about New York and I'm thinking about stop and frisk. And I'm just a little nervous about giving the police more reasons to interact with folks right now in this time period. It just leads to me to stop and frisk too much.
Saxon.
Yes, thank you. I just want to be clear. We appreciate Councilmember Amos and his willingness to hold this because we have a desire to work with you to try to figure out how we address the problem in a way that's going to be satisfactory to you, stay within the confines of the Constitution, and help the citizens to feel safe. And so, thank you for that. We are committed to working with you on how we come up with a way to do it. But I also want it clear, there is a state law that exists which the police can use. You do have a tool, but it sounds like you want something a little more refined or something a little bit more, so we're willing to work with you on that and happy to do so.
Amos Saxon. Thank you, Councilmember Amos. We have a motion to hold, I believe you said for two weeks, time certain, but we have a recess coming up, so we'll make it one cycle, time certain. And I seconded it, so please prepare that vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. That item is held. We are going to come back to item number two because it will require an executive session. Moving on to resolutions, I believe we have a substitute for item number three, 22R4785.
A resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos requesting the Mayor's Office of Violence Reduction to create and implement a biennial comprehensive crime reduction plan in the interest of promoting safety within the Atlanta city limits and for other purposes.
Motion to bring forth a substitute. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Amos. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. The substitute is before us. Councilmember Amos, what is your pleasure?
I must still approve.
For a second. Second by Councilmember Waits. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. That item is favorable. Item number four, 22R4794.
A resolution by Councilmembers Dustin Hillis, Andrea Boone, Matt Westmoreland, Howard Shook, Alex Wan, Michael Julian Bond, Jason Dozier, Jason Winston, Amir Faroki, Byron D. Amos, Mary Norwood, Liliana Bakhtiari, and Antonio Lewis to request and authorize the city auditor and audit committee to conduct a performance and financial audit of the Municipal Court of Atlanta from 2018 to present to include, but not limited to, budget, staffing, caseload, and bench time per judge, number of administrative days, number and types of cases, amounts of fines and forfeitures per each case category per year, number of failures to appear, number of failure to appear warrants, sign and input into the Georgia Crime Information Center, number and type of cases bound over to state courts, an estimate of associate revenue losses from unresolved failures to appear, and state court bind-overs, utilization of pretrial intervention for each case type, and other subjects the city auditor finds appropriate and necessary to assess the performance and financial status of the Municipal Court of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Councilmember Rover Street.
I'd like to amend to add my name.
Okay, I will second that. Please prepare that vote. Anyone else? I believe Councilmember Waits would you like to add your name? I think you're the only one that isn't on there with the amendment. So, amend to add, Councilmember Overstreet and Councilmember Waits, and I have seconded that, and please prepare that vote.
The vote is open.
Seven yays, zero nays. That item is amended, and before us, I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. That item is favorable as amended. Moving on to item number five, 22R4798.
A resolution by Councilmembers Antonio Lewis, Michael Julian Bond, Matt Westmoreland, Jason H. Winston, Amir Faroki, Jason Dozier, Liliana Bakhtiari, Alex Wan, Dustin Hillis, Andrea L. Boone, and Marcy Collier Overstreet requesting the Mayor's Office of Violence Reduction and the Atlanta Police Department develop a program to provide firearm safety storage, lock boxes, free of charge to qualifying citizens within the City of Atlanta to deter accidental shootings and reduce the theft of unsecured firearms and related crimes and for other purposes.
We also have a substitute. That does not change the captions. I'll make a motion to bring that substitute forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rover Street. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. The substitute is before us. I'll first defer to Councilmember Lewis. This is your paper. You have any comments or?
Thank you, Chair. I first want to say, what we try to, my office tried to do is be as forward-thinking as possible in looking at ways in which we can reduce crime in the City of Atlanta. We looked at different cities and we came up, we looked at different states, cities, counties, and towns across the country, and we came up with ways in which, that have been guaranteed to decrease crime. Our biggest, one of our biggest issues in the City of Atlanta is car thefts, car break-ins. When you go to a club, you go anywhere at nighttime, someone's breaking into your car. No matter what you got in your car, they only want one thing. In my district, we had an old folk home in which 26 cars were broken into, nothing was taken because they were looking for guns. And so, what's a way in which we can actually decrease this? This is what we came up with as our office, and as you can see, most of my colleagues still with me on this. So, I'm hopeful that we're able to pass this legislation to council, we're able to get some free lock boxes out here, and we're able to encourage folks about how to become safer. Because I just want to be, I want Zion's funeral to be the last funeral that I have to show up at. And he was killed by a gun that was stolen, from a car possibly. So, when a gun is, I'm about to go on a little bit of a stat, stat thing. Last year, over 200 guns were stolen from cars in the City of Atlanta. When you think about a car, I mean, a gun being stolen, that gun is going to be used five times. That gun will never get back into the system unless the police actually catches that person. That person uses that gun, then resells it to someone else. If we are able to give out 1,000 to 2,000 of these boxes, we're able to stop almost 10,000 times of a gun being used in the City of Atlanta. That's why this is important for us to reduce it right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Waits.
I'd just like to add my name to the paper.
Make that amendment.
Thank you.
I'll make a second to add Councilmember Waits to this legislation. Please prepare that vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. That item is amended. I will now make a motion to approve on substitute as amended. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays. Item is favorable, substituted as amended. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Moving on to item number six, 22R4824.
A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into Amendment Number One to add additional funding to the contract and to exercise the first renewal option for SPS 1220052, APD Background and Recruitment File Automation System with Guardians Alliance Technologies Incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department for a term of one year effective from February 2nd, 2023 through February 1st, 2024, in an amount not to exceed $50,000.0. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Overstreet. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. That item is favorable. We will take item seven and eight as a block. That is 22R4825 and 22R4826, and those are settlements.
A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Centria Martin versus City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number 2021CV349210 pending in the Superior Court of Fulton County in an amount of $130,000.0. Authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant, City of Atlanta, in the case of Cotera Incorporated versus City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number 22EV005498 pending in the State Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in an amount of $17,079.48. Authorizing the settle amount, settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes.
Motion to approve both items. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. Those two items are favorable. We now have a held item to move on, and that is item number 19, 22R4522. And there is a substitute that will add an Ipro report, and there are caption changes, so I'll make a motion to bring forth that substitute. For a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. That substitute is before us.
A resolution by Councilmember Amir Faroki, a substitute resolution authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute special procurement agreement, SPSEO2209, Center for Diversion and Services Operator, on behalf of the City of Atlanta pursuant to Section 2-1191, one, with Grady Memorial Hospital Corporation to serve as operator for the Center of Diversion Services, effective on January 16th, 2023, for a term of one year with two, two-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed $1,465,970.0 for the first year, and add to the scope of work to serve as medical and behavioral health screening provider commencing in the second year. If the renewal option is exercised and approved, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seven yays, zero nays. That item is amended. Seven yays, zero nays. That item is favorable on substitute. We have a walk-in, which I believe will be a first read since it's a ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Chair. An ordinance by Councilmember Keisha Shawn Waits to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Part 2, Chapter 106, Article 5, Section 106-227, to modify the unlawful hours of accompanied minors 16 years of age or younger from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. on any day to the hours of 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., and modify Friday and Saturday unlawful hours of accompanied minors 16 years of age or younger from 12:00 a.m. midnight to 6:00 a.m. to the hours of 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., maintaining the current exceptions listed in Section 106-227 and for other purposes.
Thank you for that. Next item will be the executive session item, 22O 1891. If you can go ahead and read that in.
An ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis to waive Section 2-783 H1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to authorize the settlement of all claims against the defendants in the case of Jazema Goldring versus Atlanta Police Officer Vladimir Henry United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia in the amount of $1,375,000.00, authorizing said amount to be paid from the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the total settlement amount and for other purposes.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, before we move into executive session, some non-executive session items. If you could address, you know, why this had to be a personal paper? I think that speaks to the timeline. And then also why it is an ordinance, which I think speaks to waiving the city code, either Ms. Robinson or Ms. Hickson, if you could let us know about that.
Yes, it was, it was requested to be a personal paper due to the timeline and the need or desire to have this matter resolved by the first meeting of the Atlanta City Council in the new year. In regards to the, why is it an ordinance? There is a section of code in the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances which provides that when the City of Atlanta is not a party to a lawsuit, and in this case, the city was not, there is a cap on the amount of settlement or judgment that the city may pay on behalf of an employee, and that is $2,000. And in order to resolve this matter, there is a need to waive that code section. And of course, an ordinance may only be waived by another ordinance, and that is why this particular paper is an ordinance.
Right. Thank you for that. And if you could speak to why we need to go into executive session?
Executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Make a motion to enter executive session. Is there a second? Councilmember Overstreet, is that what you, yes?
Councilmember, I think we should also add as a reason, the reason related to the, not for that matter, but related to documents which would be subject to exemption from the Open Records Act. And that's so that one of the previous matters can be discussed to the extent you want to discuss Mr. Amos's paper. So let's add that.
And our notes. Please prepare that vote.
The vote is open? Please vote? The vote is closed?
Seven yays, zero nays. We'll enter executive session, and I hope, believe the conference room is available. So that's where we will meet. Thank you.
Are we going in here?
are seconds. Second by Vice Chair Amos. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. The vote is closed.
Seventy eight zero nays. We have exited executive session. We have previously read twenty-two oh eighteen ninety-one into the record. I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Amos. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Seventy eight zero nays. That item is favorable. Colleagues, we need to move back to our walk-in legislation, which needs to be, I guess, amended or re-read in.
Mr. Chair, do not have the amendment? And this for first read?
It remains the same. It just, a walk-in to a committee cannot have a councilmember's name on it. Has to be, it has to read by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee.
Okay. One moment, Mr. Chair. The vote is open.
Just a, yeah.
We have a mover and a second, Mr. Chair.
I will make a motion to amend. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Overstreet.
The vote is open. Please vote. The vote is closed.
That item is amended, and we don't take action on it, but for the record, can you read it in now as it reads?
An ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Chapter one oh six, Article five, Section one oh six two-two-seven, to modify the unlawful hours of accompanied minors sixteen years of age or younger from eleven P.M. to six A.M. on any day to the hours of eight P.M. to six A.M., and modify Friday and Saturday unlawful hours of accompanied minors sixteen years of age or younger from twelve A.M. midnight to six A.M. to the hours of nine P.M. to six A.M., maintaining the current exceptions listed in Section one oh six dash two-two-seven and for the purposes.
All right. Thank you for that. And that completes our agenda for today. Do you have any questions or comments, colleagues, for our last meeting of 2022? All right. Well, I have enjoyed being on this committee with each and every one of you. I think almost everyone returns for 2023, except we'll unfortunately lose Councilmember Overstreet. We will miss you. We'll be joined by Councilmember Lewis, but thank you all. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to everyone who reports out to the committee, and look forward into having a great 2023. We are adjourned by unanimous consensus of members present.